Call to order. The regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. Let the record show all commissioners are present. Mrs. Carlson, are there any changes to the order of business?
President Decker, commissioners, no, there is no changes to the order of the business.
Any questions on the order of business for Mrs. Carlson?
Mr. President moved to approve.
Have a motion to approve the order of business. And a second. Any further discussion on the order of business? All in favor of the order of business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss with city staff? There are no items on the consent agenda you wish to have a discussion on or make comments? Look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions on the consent agenda? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We do have one five o'clock public hearing. We'll move right into our normal agenda. And the first item up is the monthly financial report, and that will be handled by our accountant, Mr. Maury. Evening.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Starting off with our treasures report as of the end of July. We're still at about 70 million. We were at 70.8 as of last month, so no major changes in our networking cash. Same goes for investments. We saw just small increases based on interest we received, but no major distributions or anything coming out of any of our investment accounts. Starting with our 1% sales tax for revenues. You can see in the red line is 2020 and the blue line is 2019. In July of 2020, we're actually about 100, almost 160,000 higher, which is a 37.3% increase. And then after seven months, the first seven months of 2020 as compared to 2019, we're $95,000 higher, $95,000 higher overall, which is about a 2.8% increase. The half percent sales tax, we always show this slide as a reminder to the public, just to show that we collect our sales tax in two separate funds, the 1% sales tax and the half percent sales tax. With our hospitality tax, you can see as well, in July of 2020, we're about $12,000 higher. So we are actually about a 16% increase compared to where we were in July of 2019. Overall, we're down $35,000 through seven months, which is a 6.7% decrease from the prior year. Moving to our occupancy tax, which is distributed directly to the Dickinson Convention and Visitors Bureau each month as we collect it, with a half percent administration fee taken out. In July of 2020, you can see we're down significantly from July of 2019, about $25,000 difference. So down about 66% in July. Through seven months, we're down about $50,000, which is a 28%, about 28% decrease from the prior year. And then moving on to our oil impact revenue, you can see as well, so 2020 again significantly lower. We're down about 558,000 from July of 2019. And then through seven months, we're down just over a million dollars, so, and which is about a 13.8% decrease from the prior year. Then moving on to our general fund expenses and revenues. So you can see the chart on the left is our expenses. The red is what we've expended, so we expended about 55%. At this point in the year, we just buffing, going off of where we should be at, we should be about 58%. So you can see we're a little under, a little under budget with our expenses, so right on track there. And we do have 45% left to collect. As far as revenue, we're ahead of schedule, collected about 70% of our revenue to this point in the year, with about 30% remaining to be collected. And then going to our enterprise, enterprise fund expenses, so you can see again, we're under that 58% mark with just about 53% expended in our enterprise funds. And then on the revenue side of our enterprise funds, we're just about right on track, we're at 57% collected with 43% remaining. If there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer them now, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Maury on the monthly financial report? There are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the financial report for July.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the financial report for July of 2020 by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up, we have an Arbor Day proclamation. And before I do the proclamation, I, there is also a celebration going on on Thursday, August 20th, which is coming up here in two days, at 1:30 at Roosevelt Elementary School, and this is for the general public. This will be hosted by the City of Dickinson Public Works Forestry Department and Dakota Community Bank and Trust sponsor, will be sponsoring. And this will be in honor of Arbor Day, and the general public is invited, is Thursday at 1:30 at Roosevelt Elementary School. We do have a proclamation to declare Arbor Day. So the City of Dickinson, North Dakota proclamation Arbor Day to all to whom these presents shall come greetings. Whereas our city's trees have been gifts to us from generations past, whose foresight and concern for the future motivated them to plant shade trees for our benefit. And whereas we must use the time we have to plant new trees so that the future generations will be able to reap the benefits of the shade, beauty, and environmental advantages which we so greatly enjoy. And now therefore, I, President of the City Commission of the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim August 20th, 2020, as Arbor Day in the City of Dickinson, North Dakota. I call upon the public spirited and foresighted citizens of our city to plant trees now for the present in the future beauty and the enjoyments of all residents. In witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal to be affixed. And I would look for a motion on the proclamation for Arbor Day.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to approve the proclamation for Arbor Day.
Second.
Second. All in favor of the proclamation, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. I will sign this. Pass it off to Mrs. Carlson. Again, I invite all to participate in Arbor Day by planting new trees. It beautifies our city, and participate by going to Roosevelt Elementary at 1:30 on Thursday to help celebrate Arbor Day with our city and our, our local sponsors. Okay, we'll move into reports, Mrs. Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. In your packet, you had some thank you notes, and I just wanted to bring it out to the public. We do sponsor out of the 20%, of the 1% is for our senior citizens. And we received four thank you notes from Richertown Senior Citizen, Amadon Prairie Senior Citizens, Sidebusters Club of Bowman, and New England Senior Center. And just wanted to mention that out in the public, may thank us very much for the donations that we have given them, and that was done through a committee.
Okay.
That's all my report.
Any questions or comments for Mrs. Carlson on the thank you notes from our senior citizen centers? Okay, we'll move on, we have a hiring journal report, Mrs. Nomenek.
Thank you, Mr. President, commissioners. First on the list is the police officer position, we currently have three openings. We did make a hire in June, and we are going to be doing some interviews next week for those positions. Operations manager, we've changed that title recently to the Public Works Operations Manager. And we did have our first round of interviews on, on that position. And we will be scheduling our second interviews, hopefully for a couple of weeks, in a couple of weeks we'll be doing those. Had some real good applicants. Solid waste recycling operator, we had two openings, and both of those have been filled. One was filled with a, an employee at our water reclamation facility, which will then cause us to open another position. Senior street maintenance operator, we had an internal position only, and that was filled with one of our street operators. We had two street maintenance operator positions, just did interviews on those. And we're actually looking at doing a second interview for them. Firefighter, we had one opening as a firefighter, and they did the first round of interviews and plan to do second interviews next week for that. The bookmobile and school services librarian has been a really tough position for us to fill, or even get applicants. This time, we got a good number of applicants, and some, it's been a tough decision for them. So they did do interviews, and we are working on some reference checks before final decision will be made. We had some limited hour library assistant positions, three of them were open, and offers have been made, interviews done, and offers made. Property of Prazer technician, we kind of held off on that when COVID kind of hit. Reopened the position in July, and we did make an offer on that position. And then, as you know, the city administrator position is open, we had a very good number of applicants for that. We will narrow those down, our city commissioners will narrow those down to the initial interviews, and we'll move forward with that.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the hiring jour, journal? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the CVB Annual Report, this is Terry Thiel.
Good evening, and thank you for hosting us again tonight. Historically, we've done the annual report probably in April or May, right around in there, and of course, a lot of things have been a little bit different this year. So I did email out before our annual report, you guys got that, but I wanted to do kind of a recap also for things. What has happened last year a little bit versus what's going on right now also. So if I can make sure I do this right on here. So, um, yeah, it was, been challenging, but we're looking at opportunities. I'm just going to go in, we're a 506 nonprofit, we're charged with representing a specific destination, helping the long-term economic development of bringing communities through travel, tourism, strategy. CVBs bring together businesses that rely on tourism and meetings for revenue. For visitors, CVBs are like the key to the city, as an unbiased resource, CVBs serve as a broker or an official point of contact for conventions, meeting planners, tour operators, visitors, which is a wide audience of what we have. We market to lots of people, different audiences, meetings, organizations, recreation, leisure, travel. Our services are free. We assist planners, meeting preparation, encourage business travelers and visitors alike to visit historic, cultural, and recreational sites. So we were incorporated in 1982, the first was located in the Chamber Building. Currently funded by the 2% lodging tax paid by visitors collected at the hotels and motels, so this is not a residential tax that's collected. Historically, we're funded by that, and it used to be a portion of hospitality tax. We were after the chamber house in the little building you see down there, it used to be next to San Law Office, and then in 2000, we constructed the building that's right next to the museum center, and we're there currently. So thank you for re-ruffing us, I wasn't sure if we were going to have buckets, maybe we wouldn't, but you know what? It's time, the building, I think, needed it. So we have our board of directors, Clayton Altman is our president, Elaine Myron, vice president, Tom Fast, secretary treasurer, Kristy Schwartz, Ryan Gillick, Jason Frederick, Jim Bridger. Staff is myself, Julie Oprah Gabrich, Joel Walters, we have summer staff, and currently now it's just on the weekends, Peggy Rixen Kuntz, she's been with us for 20 years, and Shirley Gangler, who's been with us for a few years. Our community partners has been a long time partnership with active community development organizations such as Stark Development Corporation, Dickinson Chamber, the Downtown Association, Job Service North Dakota Southwest Economic Developers, Stark County Historical Society, Southwest North Dakota Museum Foundation, and each entity has its mission statement and goals, but we collaborate and try to make each other stronger. Little bit of the photos that are coming out, some are tourism, some that are ours, so you see the variety, hunting, leisure. Tourism in North Dakota is third largest industry. You can see obviously oil and gas is in there, but when you take in all the different businesses that are affected, we end up being the third largest. Job Service, just a little bit of information on their first quarter, that's all I could obtain really, you see the first quarter for 19, and then first quarter for 20. And I think this will be interesting moving forward as we get into, the next quarters for reporting. So it's still the number five employer for Stark County. Now, this is the entire county, that's all, I couldn't get a breakdown just for Dickinson. Business establishments of 102, average employment about 1,578. But the, the average wages you can see are a little bit lower, but we're taking into consideration some of the frontline part-time staff at some of the faster food restaurants and such. So a little bit on the wages for the first quarters, average, average yearly wage, and the total for the year. This one, I went back to the 2019 tax collections, and this is just on food and beverage alone. So food and beverage generated 100,482,237 dollars approximately. And what I did was, I took out, I backed out that 1% that's included within the lodging tax, so that's how I came up with that number. So I also wanted to kind of do a breakdown on what tax collections are, are generated. So I took out the state just because they have a variety between food and also with alcohol with that, but the city at the 1.5% in hospitality tax at 1%. So if you look at the 1.5 from food and beverage, it's just over 1.5 million, and the 1% for last year was just over 4 million, for just over 2.5 million. I put back, or I went into the lodging, put back that 1% there, so the state, we, it's a 9.5% on lodging room tax. So the gross on this was 19,586,300, $350. So the state collected 5%. We received the 2%, which is a 391,727. And then the city collected 293,795 on the 1.5, and I put back in that 1% of 195,863. So the city collected a total on that for 489,658. So I put it together, and this industry within our community, for the City of Dickinson, collected 120 million, just over 120 million gross revenue for that. So it was just a little over 3 million for the city collecting on those, that industry, and then what we collected with a little bit less on the admin fee. So I did a little recap too of 19 and 18 on occupancy, in 2019 is 55%, 18 was 49%. And the average daily rates were right in that 71, 72 dollars. My original budget had been predicted at 55% occupancy at $75, hoping a little bit of a bump in that ADR. The 20% LTL is what you see is long-term stay loss, and that's when it could be a contracted room that's more than 30 days. After 30 days, then there's no tax with that. So I backed it out, and in my budget, I had estimated about 417,740 dollars. That's with 1,733 rooms, rooms budgeted, and later, as we got into the year, that room number was reduced just a little bit. So what we did when we started this year is that, we typically start in March and October for our paid hunting, leisure, travel on digital platforms. So it's Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Google, YouTube, we have organic, and we have paid, but the paid starts during that timeframe. So this year, because of COVID starting, we only did one, one month, and that was based on the Badlands Dinosaur Museum, and then we had to suspend everything. But what I wanted to show was that in 2019, we were spending 395 dollars and 25 cents a week for that month of March. And this year, we upped it to 2,174 dollars. We were going to originally budget almost 75,000 just on paid digital. And where it went was, you can see March of 2020, 75% it went into these major cities, based on what we get for the North Dakota Tourism Division's strategies. And then the rest of those states were that 25%, you can see was in there with that. So you can see we put in quite a bit for the month of March. So what we did, looking at what we had spent, you can see the difference in how much we had for engagements. You can see March of 2019 for Facebook, just over 19,000 engagements on that. But in Facebook, when we put in 2020, we had over 154,000. And you can see the numbers that when we were reaching those with more engage, more paid advertising in there, we were getting a lot more return on that. And then you can see where that website travel came from, that was going back directly into our website. So the one on the right was 19, and you can see for 20 on the left. So if you take a look at this, you can really see, you see Illinois at the top, March 1st, 2023, the end of March. We had direct users of almost 3,000 on there versus the year before at 230. The same thing going down to Michigan, 1,441 versus 99, Wisconsin, over 1,100 versus 64. So the numbers are very telling on that, and they, and they come back on our Google Analytics with that. On the left, you can see some of what was put in there for the ad, but basically, it was all on the, on the museum. So as COVID entered our world, we became more of a local resource. And we really tried to do some other things, maybe draw, to broaden our strength within the community. People needed things within our own community to see and do, and try to make themselves, you know, feel better, and yet still know what is going on. Because one of the things we found was, is that, you know, the restaurants obviously were closing down, but then some later were starting to reopen. Who did take out, what are their times, you know, not knowing exactly what was going on. So this was one of our lead pictures on our website, and then you could click the more for that, and then we did a listing. So we did a lot in informational links, we did food to go that you could click, we had what was open, what wasn't, hospitality updates, ideas for social distancing and such. And then also resources that would go back to the state, whether it would be for information for loans, or just COVID resources with that. We, you can see fluffy fields down on the right side, they were doing the hand sanitizers, is, you know, trying to figure out where that would, you know, how we could help people with that.
So there you go with that. I want you to add some levity locally. People are stressed out and stuff, as a matter of fact, people tend to get sicker faster when they're stressed out. And so sometimes, we're not poking fun at COVID-19 at all, but maybe we need to do something that will just get people to smile. You know, add some local humor to local reader boards and signs, I wanted to thank Terry in Dickinson, North Dakota for saying these, they happen to have a reader board, and, and, you know, and they, she puts in Reader's Digest jokes.
I'll just show you, um, he's going to talk about that LED sign down there, and I don't know, you know, how many people had watched that as we were doing this and started in. But that reader board, while we were not able to put a lot of events and things on, we decided to try to maybe put some, some life back into some people. We actually got some good response on it, people that said, you know, that really helped, it's just some really dumb jokes that came up. And so that was part of what we did, we started the campaign, hashtag Smile Dickinson to go along with that. The other thing we did was again-
Jokes like every day, like why did the Oreo-
We'll go over here real quickly. I probably hit the wrong button on it. Yeah, go ahead.
So there you go with that. I want you to add some levity locally. People are stressed out and stuff, as a matter of fact, people tend to get sicker faster when they're stressed out. And so sometimes, we're not poking fun at COVID-19 at all, but maybe we need to do something that will just get people to smile. You know, add some local humor to local reader boards and signs, I wanted to thank Terry in Dickinson, North Dakota for saying these, they happen to have a reader board, and, and, you know, and they, she puts in Reader's Digest jokes like every day. Like why did the Oreo cross, or go to the dentist, you know? And there it is, because he lost his feelings. And it may be silly, but you know what, it's fun. If you can just get people to smile, it's going to help. It is really going to help. You know, here's another one she sent me, what do you get from a pampered cow? You get spoiled milk. So there you go. So another thing you could do is share funny YouTube videos. This Dickinson, North Dakota, and Terry sent me this, is great. If you would change your website, your homepage particularly, and like she put right on their homepage is hospitality events and business COVID-19 updates. So what's happening is, it wasn't all about visiting Dickinson, you can see things to do, events, stay, dining, meetings about, you can see all that's still there. But the focus of the website was to help both visitors and local, you know? And so if you take your website and become the go-to resource for your locals, like where do you buy toilet paper, hand sanitizer, business hours, customer limitations? You know, so what you're going to do is change a little bit from a tourism website or a downtown website to a local resource website. So if you go more, if you click the more-
So this is what we've tried to do, and, and what we'd really urge everybody who does have a business, what, you know, especially on the service end of it, make sure that your website is updated and that people do understand that you're practicing for COVID, you know, that what your hours are, all those different things. Okay. So, so that's what, part of what we had done with that, and I would urge people to make sure you've got your information updated. The other thing we tried to do is more detail on different things for people to do, the wildlife viewing. We were very heavy on history and driving and using the museum with that. We were practicing, we, we, excuse me, worked a lot with hashtag NDCmart restart, and making sure that our industry partners were aware of what is going on. Meetings and conventions, right now, things are paused, and they're paused pretty much across the country. They are starting to figure out ways that people can still meet in person, they're finding that that is, it's not going to be a substitute to Zoom all the time. You know, people are not happy with that long-term, we knew we had to do that. But right now, we've been sensitive to those meetings, those, or, those people who, that we work with, and been writing hand notes, but we'll get back with them. Attractions and experiences, you can see things are opening up and have been, pretty much everything. The only thing really would probably be the camping in the Theodore Roosevelt National Park, but you guys have seen most, everything is opening. We get a lot of questions on that, but it's been a roller coaster, there's no doubt about that, and that's been the way for a lot of people. And we're no different with that. So this is from the North Dakota Tourism Division, and it's a statewide estimate. You can see in the very beginning, the blue, that is up to the 4th of July, and then we're adding on and adding on it. As of just getting up to the 1st of August, there's been 755 million dollars lost in the state through August 1st. Lost tax revenue, the same thing. Lost tax revenue, the same thing, about $37 million so far. And this is up to the 1st of August. Now, this is one, it's interesting because we have been percentage-wise leading the state on occupancy. And I just had Tourism sent me this, this morning. And so as of July 22nd, Stark was at 67%, 67.3%. And that's a huge jump. Well, my Star report just got here. It said 62% put that by the end of, of July. So, you know, some of those numbers might have gone down a little, but we've been performing very well. In fact, Williston C V B called and asked what we were doing to have jumped so high like that. So you can see the difference. The blue is the rest of the state with that. So year-to-date, and it kind of reflects what was said before, year-to-date, we were down, down about 30.6%. That'll change here as soon as I enter today's information that I got from the Star. But down about 28% on the tax collections. You can see the June 2020 was 52.9%. And last year, we were at 73.3%. So you can see those numbers there, but you can see where we're at. Average daily rates, year-to-date, as of my June report, was $66.99, down a little over 5%. At the bottom, again, you can see where June was 65.93, but last year's at 77.91. So it's quite a bit of difference, just even in the ADR going down. And you can see those other graphs on there for the other years. Even 2015 was, you know, a lot better on that. So this is just one on the national park. Obviously, that's dropped off also, but I will tell you, they've been very busy over there, especially on the weekends over in Madora with the park, people going through there. So even Tourism shifted a little bit. They ceased what they had typically done out of state, focused in-state, and that was very new for them. They paused Canadian travel. We don't know if that's going to open up even for until the rest of the year. Group travel is paused, international travel, although we're still communicating with some of them. And so a lot, you can see markets still arriving, are different modes. We have a lot of them in the RVs and the campers that are coming in. I had one individual that spoke with Julie. He had left Ohio, came to Dickinson, went to North Park Campground and said it was the safest he had felt since he had left. And so we have those people coming in. Website visits are still high, and nationwide rural safe area travel is increasing. So innovation on necessity, we had a sudden shock. We have to rethink things. We're trying to get different user content of people who are telling the stories of a great place out here. Marketing 2020, we had six committed ads. We did a whole new email blast gathered from four years' worth of emails that we went in and hand, you know, found and put in and designed e-blast to go off into, we call them that, the large emails in June and July, or June and August, or 1,400 people. We've been doing organic Facebook, Instagrams. We've hosted three freelance travel writers with the North Dakota Tourism Division. We're doing posting stories to different web and content. You can see the rediscovered one. That's a whole, both of those are things that I've written and they had posted on our Gateway to North Dakota. So we're still engaged in the marketing. We got a little bit of money from the Tourism Division. This was handed out as a grant to different C V Bs. Our total was just over 9,000. We did a little bit on a print there, about one-ninth of a page ads. But you can see, we focused over to the Fargo area with that. So that's the first time they'd ever done that. We got some digital campaign money also from the Tourism Division. Forum Communications, theirs was $2,500, and they matched it themselves, so they gave us $5,000. So you can see there, it's just an example, North Dakota Living, the museum was featured, that one-ninth page over there. This a little bit on that digital co-op. We focused on the museum again, clicking the different size ads. It went back and it went back to the landing page on our website, so we can get those analytics also. So our budget. So before COVID, you had seen where I projected 55%, $75. We're at that 417, just over 417,000. That thing didn't move over on me, I'm sorry. The board was going to use a little over 24,000 in reserves, a little miscellaneous to the gift shop and that. So we projected $445,000 budget. Our marketing was at almost 146,000, office expenses, staff. So that's what it was. So now I've refigured it. Our January through July collections at 124,000. That August through December at about that 101. Now, and how I figure also is the number of days that are left because we're about two months behind in tax collections. So I figured that at probably about 38.6% occupancy, $62, because I know that some of that's going to be included in the summer rates, even though it ends later. So it's about 226,000. I chopped the marketing. We stopped all the digital and all that wasn't committed at that time. I took out the funds for even reprinting guides, and we've just skinnied it down. So on the budget, it's about a net of about 122,000 loss. However, we did have some carryover cash because we had a good year last year. And so that's why some of that, as we come forward now, as things are rising a little bit, we're going to be in a little bit better position. So we did have that. So right now, as of the 1st of August in checking, savings is about 79,740. Estimating on a total with things is about 113,000. So about 193,520. Remaining expenses out of that refocused budget, we may come over with a little bit, about 52,000 or so. That's my projection. Now, it could be a better on the income because obviously, we're getting more coming in. But, and I, this was Suzie just a little bit, but I, that 52,000 really, after, we really need something that will float in between. Because in between those checks and those seasons, we just have to have something to float a little bit so that we're not sitting there at a, at a negative. So typically on a budget, I don't do this till the closer to October, November, where we know where we're at because we're receiving just funds, but not requesting anything. And then I wait to see what the North Dakota Tourism Division's marketing funds are going to be and what they're doing. But right now, as we're coming to you, I'm looking at, is it going to be a 25% occupancy at $55 and a 10% loss? I don't know. I don't know. So I'm putting it at 141. Is it going to be 30? It could, especially as I get along a little bit further. Now we're getting some better numbers. But as of when I, you know, put this together, this is what it was. So we're still looking at if we just take the budget down to the bare, it's about 334. We'd be at a deficit of about 193,000 roughly, like I said, unless that income goes up. We have a total of about 158,000 in reserves. If we took 100,000 out of there, we'd still have that deficit. What we're, what we're requesting for you to consider is 200,000. We would do probably 5,000 in admin. That would just go back into the office. If we added back some summer staff, we'd get busy, and then covering the deficit. But putting in about 96, 97 back into marketing. So right now, currently, the marketing would have been just over about 36,000, 35,725. And adding it in, we'd be upping it to about 133,499. So our 2020 was budgeted at 145,943 prior to COVID-19. So if we took that 158,000 reserves, took out the 100,000 to put in, it'd be about 58,000. Standard practice is about a six-month for an operating on your, on your reserves or your budget. So we would have about a one-and-a-half to two-month reserve if we stayed at that 50,000. These numbers are very fluid. Yeah, I'll just tell you that. They're just very fluid, and I will know more within a month or so. So I'm again, just kind of going back to what this industry generates, what the city receives, received last year, and how much we operated on last year. So it all begins with a visit, inspirational information, and interaction. And we message real lives. A destination organization promotes her community as an attractive travel destination along with enhancing its public image as a place to work, live, and socialize. And it all begins with a visit. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Thiel. Any questions for Ms. Thiel on the annual report? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have a 5 o'clock public hearing, and this is to our Chapter 25 amendment to our offenses. City Attorney Winko.
Mr. President, Commissioners, included in your packet is the ordinance to revise and amend certain city codes within the city's criminal code section so that the code is up to date with North Dakota law. The city attorney in conjunction with the city prosecutor have completed these updates in August of every year. One of the updates before you concerns the tobacco ordinance. These updates are simply to make the code sections consistent one with one another. As we discussed during the first reading, the board may certainly want to bring this topic back for further discussion if it desires to do so. There have been no changes since the first reading, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, we still have in here the First Defense suspension for one day?
Correct, Mr. President. The last revised ordinance that the, this board approved included that.
So we'll have to go back?
Yep, so you would have to go back and revisit the entire ordinance to make any additional changes as a whole.
So we can have that on the docket next month then, to, to look at that. Because I think we were kind of in agreement about not having that First Defense being a suspension. It's just where they're, the retailers are dealing with a lot of, you can go into any of these, these establishments, and they have almost a new employee every time you walk in there. You don't even recognize them anymore, and they're just chasing employees. And I, I would say the training is just a nightmare to keep somebody and keep them trained up on the, on the compliance. I mean, at least with the First Defense, I think they need to, we still need to adhere to the fine, but not so much the suspension unless, Commission, unless you guys, the Commission feels differently. There is some language changes, if you read it, to the fireworks, discharge of fireworks. Any questions on that? I think that's just taking out the intent.
Correct.
And then we have some amendments to the solid waste refuse material and such. Any other questions, comments on this?
I would agree on the First Defense. I don't think we should have a suspension in there.
This is Ordinance 1699. And if I'm correct, we had a public hearing already.
I believe it is set for the-
Oh, this is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing.
Excuse me, yeah, that's why we have a 5 o'clock timetable. I, I forgot. Okay, so anyone from the public wants to come forward and have any comments on the Chapter 25 amendment to the offenses, which include fireworks discharge, our smoking sales ordinance, and some other detail, cleanup details on our solid waste? Please come forward, state your name, and let us know what your concern is with the amendments. For the general public that are listening in, the number to call in is 701-456-7006. Again, it's 456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on our amendments? Anyone from the public? If you're watching online, again, the phone number is 701-456-7006. You may call in and state any concerns with our Chapter 25 offenses amendment. Anyone from the public? Seeing no one or hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion on these amendments, concerns? Now I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the edits in Chapter 25 of the court.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions, comments for city staff? If none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. This is also the time, if you have any public comments that are not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, and let us know what concerns you have that are not on our agenda. You may also call in at 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Any public comments, not on the agenda? Anyone from the public? How long is our video delay? So it should be instantaneous, right? Okay. Seeing no one from the public and hearing no calls, I'll close that section of our agenda. Okay, we will go back to engineering. We have nothing in public safety this evening, so we'll go back into engineering. First item up is a development agreement, and that will be handled by Assistant City Engineer Marshick.
President Becker, Commissioners, included in your packet is an agreement between the City of Dickinson and the American Bank Center. We have a change to that document that was included in your packet in further discussion with the bank. We'd like to remove Item 2C, which has to do with dollars put forth for a melon overlay. So that melon overlay will not be moving forward in with this agreement. However, it still does include general items, especially some contract items due to the water main replacement in First Avenue West. City engineering staff is recommending approval of this development agreement with American Bank Center, and I would entertain any questions you would have on this agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Marshick. Any questions for city staff on this development agreement? Any questions or comments?
So we're just, explain the 2C being removed.
Moving forward in discussions with work that was being performed by the city and the dollars that the bank wanted to put forth, we couldn't come to an agreement on that dollar amount and the work for that. So the bank, what we did agree to was that they would forego having the melon overlay in front of the building, and they would not be contributing the $30,000 towards work.
Any other questions or comments for city staff? Hearing no comments or questions, I'd look for a motion. Move to approve. I have a motion to approve by- I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions for city staff on this development agreement? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a cost participation and maintenance agreement for the I-94 East Business Loop, and again, this will be handled by Assistant City Engineer Marshick.
Thank you, Commissioners. Enclosed in your packet is a typical cost participation and maintenance agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. This is for the project on the I-94 East Business Loop from Tenth Avenue East to the west side of Exit sixty-four. So the preliminary cost estimate for the project as a total is fifteen million, five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand and sixty-nine dollars. So our portion of that with this agreement would be one million, five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. The additional requirements that we have, which are standard, are spelled out in the attached agreement. Engineering staff is recommending approval of this CPM agreement. Do you have any questions in regards to this for me?
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick? The landowners on the north side have all been notified, I, I would take it by the staking at least, how, with the scope of this project.
I know that there was quite a bit of reach out from the DOT's consultant, especially in regards to the right-of-way and if there were encroachments into there, they gave them a date that those needed to be moved by for this upcoming construction project. So I know it's been ongoing. This project's been in the works for a number of years and was put on hold, so those talks have continued over the years.
And we're going with the, a different sidewalk now, so it kind of shrinks how wide the, the work is. If I remember correctly, we had, the path isn't disconnected, or there, there's not like a boulevard, right? Or there's a smaller boulevard?
It, I believe it's kind of a trail on the one side, and then they are delineating the right-of-way with kind of an ornamental chain fence, so a single chain, just to help property owners understand actually where that line lies with their properties.
Okay. May I have sent notification about their intent with that fence?
I, that's my understanding from our meetings.
Any other questions on the, the amount? Basically covering about ten percent of this project.
That is correct.
Were the original estimates like over twenty million?
I think they were twenty-one or twenty-two million, I think originally, so.
Yeah, I know with the roundabout, that was part of an option that increased the cost. And I think construction costs have changed so that helped bring that estimate down. So between the signals at tenth and, um, the lard, I-94 Business Loop, that shrunk that estimate.
I think people will be excited once those lights go in there.
I know that they are much more excited about the signal than the roundabout.
Right. I think that would have been difficult, very difficult to do, so. Okay, any other questions? Comments for staff? Not, I'd look for a motion on this agreement with the North Dakota DOT.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a West Ridge Third Edition multi-party construction and funding agreement, and again, this will be handled by City Assistant Engineer Marshick.
Thank you, Commissioners. Attached in your packet was a multi-party construction and funding agreement for what is West Ridge Third Edition. This agreement follows our new template with the exception of requiring the contractor bonding. As we move forward, we will include that in further discussions, but in working with this applicant, that was something that we had previously agreed not to pursue. This agreement is between the city, Roars Development, Inc., and BG Excavation. It does require the developer to provide the hundred and thirty percent financial security, which for this project is the amount of five hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and forty cents. The city engineering staff is recommending approval of this multi-party agreement with Roars Development and BG Excavation. Do you have any questions for me on this item?
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this agreement, three, three-way party agreement, I guess it is? And if there, there is a representative in the, Mr. Esim's here as a representative from Roars, if there's any questions for him. Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the West Ridge Third Edition multi-party construction and funding agreement.
Oh, so move.
We have a motion to approve the funding agreement by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Yes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to public works, and we have a recycling service agreement with Demcon Material Recovery and Facility, and that'll be handled by our solid waste and recycling manager, Mr. Prowse. Good evening.
Good evening, President and Commissioners. Enclosed in your packet is a recycling services agreement with Demcon Material Recovery Facility. They're the facility we take our recyclable materials to in Chalkview, Minnesota. The original contract terminates on September thirtieth, 2021. As we were working through our 2021 budget numbers, the MRF recommended that we renew that contract, as there was about eleven-dollar increase, bringing our new rates to seventy-five dollars per ton. And that was a lot was driven off of the changing, ever-changing recycling market. We're currently at sixty-four dollars a ton. One other edit to that contract was just the acceptable, unacceptable materials. We spelled it out that plastics are one, two, and fiber the only acceptable materials. City staff, Attorney Wanko, and Demcon Industries have reviewed the contract and recommend
Mr. Prowse, are we then looking for an adjustment to our recycling fee?
At this given point, I don't believe we need to. This company still does offer the rebate program, which we have been very fortunate in the past, well, since the recycling program has started, we've been very fortunate not to use the money I allocated towards disposal costs, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Prowse on this agreement?
I, I have one. I, this is maybe what you just said, but I just need clarification. So do we usually have to pay Demcon, or do they usually end up paying us with that rebate program?
It works two ways. We actually pay them sixty-four dollars per ton currently to dispose of our recycled materials, but then we get an eighty percent revenue share back, which offsets the cost. So when it's all said and done, if I recall right, we shipped out seventy-five ton last month, it cost us about six hundred dollars to ship those materials, or, excuse me, to dispose of those materials. This is for the disposal side of it only. The next one I talked about would be the transportation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, I'd look for a motion on this recycling agreement with Demcon.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions, comments?
Mr. Prowse?
Yes.
So they will take glass, some glass?
They will not accept glass. We do, we do allow it through the waste stream, but we get a higher rate, a revenue, back because we don't accept glass from our residents.
Okay, all right. I just thought that is an acceptable material and-
Yep.
So.
They allow it to come through, but we advertise we don't accept it due to the fact of it costs us, if I recall, like sixty-five or sixty-seven dollars per ton to dispose of that in Minnesota.
Okay, all right.
Which is extremely higher than our tipping rate here.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Prowse, you have a transportation, a recycled material agreement?
Yes, also enclosed in your package. That is with Tracker Management. Tracker Management was hired through an RFP about a year ago to transport our recycled materials from our location to Demcon Material Recovery Facility. To keep the two contracts in sync with each other, we'd also like to extend that contract to the same thing, again, allowing another three years till October, or, excuse me, September thirtieth of 2024. There were no changes to that contract. Round trip is still twenty-two seventy-five, two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. City staff, Attorney Wanko, and Tracker Management all have reviewed the contract and recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions for Mr. Prowse on this recycling transportation agreement? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on this agreement.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion or questions on this agreement? Hearing no questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, Mr. Zurov, you have a West Ridge change order?
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission. This change order is a reduction in the, in the price, which normally doesn't come to commission. But if you recall, the West Ridge Road Improvements bid did come in substantially higher because of the pavement grude markings. I think it was about seventy thousand over engineer's estimate. So Highlands did a very good job in looking at other options and alternatives, and they included the pavement markings on the West Ridge Road on the latest State Avenue, Eighth Street West pavement marking project. By doing that, and by extending the markings till spring, they had a considerable unit price reduction, and so the pavement markings for West Ridge will be included in the State Avenue, Eighth Street markings. And then also, we did include additional tasks, additions for the West Ridge project, including some additional manholes needed, and also on windside additional curb and concrete patching for the State Avenue project. So I just wanted to bring it forward, keep you in the loop what was going on. It's very detailed by Highlands Engineering. There's additional question, questions, Andrew Schrank is here, but I wanted to bring it forward for commission, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zurov. So this is a fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand?
Fifty thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents decrease in the West Ridge Road Improvement Change Order, and if you've been out there, you can see the construction going on.
Yes, it'll, it'll, hopefully, it'll, it'll look a lot better here shortly, so I know there's a lot of traffic, it seems like, out there when I drove out there the other day, but it's always that way when there's construction. It seems like everybody wants to go to a certain spot.
Right.
We're tearing up a road, so. Any other questions or comments?
Don't see many decreases.
No.
What's that?
Don't see many decreases.
So, so I think we'll gladly approve. Any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion on the consideration to approve the change order, number one to project two zero one nine one two.
I'll move to approve the reduction in cost.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the reduction.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Zurov or Mr. Schrank? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have, thank you, Mrs. Zurov. We have nothing in planning and zoning this evening, nothing from bill and code enforcement. Commissioners, are there any items that you wish to speak to that were not on the agenda this evening? Anything the commission wants to bring up that were not on the agenda? Hearing nothing, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned.